Let's start the meeting. Is everyone ready?
Yes.
Okay, so our 7:00 PM, first we have a public hearing on the CDVG-CV application. If Ms. Settler could start?
Yes.
We're going to do a prayer.
Not yet.
Yeah, this has to be before you officially start your meeting.
Yes.
As part of the federal community act, funds have been made available to urban development to distribution in relation to COVID-19 pandemic. Funds in Pennsylvania distributed by the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Chris, you're breaking up.
I've been telling them that.
Whatever you're doing, you gotta stop.
What?
Can I make an announcement, please? Could everyone mute your lines so that we can hear Chris Settler?
Thank you. Okay. Funds in Pennsylvania are being distributed by the Department of Community and Economic Development, the way they normally distribute community development block grant funds. The funds available to the borough are $70,984. The funds must be used for immediate and direct response to the pandemic, and they must be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus. Purpose of this hearing is to question what residents and council think are the needs that will, that the borough will have to prevent, prepare, and respond to the coronavirus, either immediately or for a second surge. There's some research has been done with Colonial Neighborhood Council. It was attempted to contact the Montgomery County Community Action Agency, CADCOM, to see if they are having an increase in calls for assistance from Conshohocken, but they have not responded to that. The, excuse me?
No, you don't.
The funds still have to benefit low and moderate income people, and many of the requirements for income determination and fair housing and minority women business enterprises are still in force with these funds. Anything that is undertaken has to be a result of an increased need due to the virus, like there are more people who need bags of food from Colonial Neighborhood Council than did before. Uses of the funds can be for food banks, senior centers, direct assistance for rent and mortgage or utilities. PVE is, is a, an eligible activity for residents who income qualify. There's two ways to income qualify. One is to determine someone's, to do a full income determination, or we could go with a presumed benefit for elderly, people with disabilities, abused children. This would be a way of helping older adults in the community if there is a project that can be, can be identified. The applications are due on, at the end of July, so there will have to be another public hearing once an activity is selected, and there will need to be a resolution from council authorizing the, authorizing the submission of the application. It's an all electronic application, and the state intends to make its decisions within 30 days of receipt of the application. So this would be right in time for anything that could happen at the beginning of the fall. As part of the application, we'll also be asking council to approve revisions to it, to the borough's existing citizens' participation plan. The plan needed to be updated anyway, based on new directives from, and guidance from DCED. However, we have to include in the new citizens' participation plan accommodations for the CDVG-CV money, which involves the ability to use remote public hearings. It takes the cap off of, this is services. Conshohocken has not done services in the past, and prior to the pandemic, you were able to use only 15% of your CDVG application for services. That has been eliminated, and they have reduced the comment period for people to comment on any uses or make suggestions for uses to five days. So that being said, that would be something that would have to be acted upon at the same time the submission of the application was authorized. So if anyone has any suggestions on how the funds could be used, I would greatly appreciate your assistance in this matter.
Anyone have any suggestions for Chris?
I had a woman, I had a woman call me, and she was out of funds to buy food or any other incidentals that she needed. Would that be part of that? Could it be used for that?
Yeah, I believe it could be. The state is putting an awful lot of requirements on this, but I've been in touch with Colonial Neighborhood Council, and we might be able to assist them with their food bags. Direct assistance to individuals is not permitted, so it would have to go to, like if someone needed, you can pay up to three months of rent, mortgage payment, or utilities, but it has to go to the, to the bank, to the landlord, or to the utility company. But we could work with Colonial Neighborhood Council, maybe by providing additional money for food to, to their Meals on Wheels program, or to their regular program. We could help some older people, which would free up some of their other resources for younger people who couldn't qualify as income eligible.
Yep.
I would be very comfortable with working with Colonial Neighborhood Council. I think they're a wonderful asset in our community, and they have a proven track record of being very responsible.
Yeah, I've spoken with Sandy, their director, and I've spoken with their board president. If it's possible to do this, and I'm not totally 100% sure it is yet, I don't want a situation where the council would have to have, do a lot of the paperwork. So the more that we could handle from the borough's end of it, it would make it much easier for them to do this. So, and, and we do have, you know, we have Nancy and I, and we could certainly take care of the administrative end of this.
Right.
So if we can, Meals on Wheels people are already qualified as low income, and so, you know, and, and they are experiencing an issue with their containers. They're having to do deep sanitizing of them, and they're wearing out. So that is another thing that, that could be done, provided we can do it with proper procurement and, and that no monitor from DCED comes and says anyone has to repay any money.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Chris, I believe we need to do public comment on this also. Does anyone have public comment? Brittany, do you have any emails?
No, I did not receive any email submissions.
If there are no public comments, then there will have to be a second public hearing in early July, prior to your July council meeting.
Okay.
I may have to prevail upon Brittany and Bobby Joe to help me out with this again. But I want to make sure we have something that's fundable and that we're not going to have any problems with. So if that is the case, then we will hold a second public hearing and ask for authorization at your July meeting.
That would be great, Chris. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Nice to talk to you again.
You too. So with that, I'm going to call our regular meeting to session. By the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Conshohocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. Brittany, if you could do roll call, please?
Councilmember Tucino is absent. Councilmember Griffin?
I'm here.
Councilmember Flanagan?
Here.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Stokely?
Here.
Vice President Sokolowski?
Here.
President Leonard?
Here. Thank you, Brittany.
Here.
Okay, Vice President Sokolowski, if you could do prayer for council?
Absolutely. O divine master, in deep humility, we place ourselves, our thoughts, and our plans in thy hands. We beg thee to fill our minds, our wills, with the gifts of wisdom, understanding, counsel, fortitude, knowledge, and piety. Help us not to think of ourself or personal desires, but rather consider the responsibilities laid upon us. Help us to promote, as far as possible, the welfare of our people and to treat them with impartiality and justice. Grant us the power to set a good example in thought, word, and in deed, so that thy blessings will be showered upon us and the people we represent. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
To the republic, for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
With liberty.
With liberty.
And justice.
For all.
For all. Thank you for joining us for our regularly, regularly scheduled public voting session via video conference under conference call. At this time, I would ask that all participants, except for borough council, the mayor, borough manager, and borough solicitor mute their audio lines. No public comments will be permitted during the course of the meeting until the designated public comments section located on the agenda. You will be notified during the meeting when public comments are permitted. You may also submit written comments via email to brogers@conshohockenpa.gov. A member of the borough administration during public comment period will read public comments submitted in this manner. For all comments, please include your name and address for the record. It is of the utmost importance that the public is given every available opportunity to participate in the meeting. However, if required, we will mute all audio lines due to any inappropriate comments or behavior during the remote meeting. Borough council and the administration thank you in advance for your cooperation during this remote meeting. We hope that everyone in our community is staying safe and healthy. There was also no executive session this evening held prior to the regular meeting on personnel matters. Council members just remember to state your name for the record when making a motion or seconding a motion. The next item on the agenda is Land Use Matters Public Hearing and Ordinances. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, President Leonard. This evening, council has before them two resolutions for approval of land development and/or a waiver of land development. We'll consider them separately. The first is Resolution 2020-15. That is for preliminary and final minor subdivision and land development for 331 West Seventh Avenue. Council had the applicant before it during its work session this month, and the applicant walked through in detail the plan, what is proposed, the waivers requested, and the proposed conditions. At this time, council has before it a resolution. The resolution would grant preliminary and final minor final subdivision and land development approval for the project, which consists of dividing the property into three lots. Lot one will have a single-family detached dwelling, and lots three will contain single-family semi-detached dwellings. The specific waivers requested by the applicant are from Sado Section 22-409.2 to permit grading within the alley and rights of way and within three feet of the property line and rights of way. Sado Section 22-421.4, a partial waiver to permit street trees within the West Seventh Avenue right of way, and from Sado Section 22-804 to permit negotiation of a fee in lieu of the dedication of park or recreational land. If council is inclined this evening, their approval would contain the following conditions. The applicant would be granted the waiver from Section 22-409.2. The applicant would be granted the partial waiver from 22-421.4, provided the applicant agreed to a condition that the property owner maintains the street trees. Applicant would be granted a partial waiver from Sado Section 22-804, subject to the payment of a fee in lieu in the amount of $12,000, $4,000 per dwelling unit council's usual charge for single-family and semi-detached dwellings. The applicant would comply with all comments in the review letters of your borough engineer, your borough zoning officer, your, the Montgomery County Planning Commission, to the extent the borough requires it. Applicant shall obtain the, the borough fire marshal, shall comply with all conditions of relief, which was granted by the zoning hearing board, shall execute stormwater operations and land development agreements, subject to my approval and the approval of borough administration, shall impose deed restrictions for all, for both Lot One and for both dwellings on Lot Two and Three, to prohibit interior storage within the garages to be used for off-street parking only. Again, as currently proposed, as the applicant discussed with you, there's only a garage for the single-family home. However, this condition would require the applicant, should subsequent garages be built for the semi-detached dwellings, to also use those only for storage purposes. The applicant would satisfy all outstanding invoices with the borough. There are existing features to be removed. The applicant would do so expeditiously and get all required approvals as needed, and the applicant shall abide by all terms and conditions of this resolution. Those are the conditions of the resolution before you. If council is inclined, you grant that applicant, that resolution this evening.
I, this is Anita. I'll make that motion to accept and defer.
Mr. Peters, I, I have one question before we do that. When I read it today, I believe that they're removing the garage for the single, single dwelling home?
No, they, no, they are not. Removing as in not providing it?
Correct.
No, they are still providing it.
They are still providing it. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So on that note, I would need a motion to approve Resolution 2020-15, approving preliminary final minor subdivision and land development for 333 West Seventh Avenue.
And I'll make that motion. That's Anita.
All right, Griffin, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Tina, you're opposed?
There was an opposition.
I believe everyone is in favor.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries.
And Colleen, I did say, if there, if, if we do hear anything differently about that garage, this resolution assumes the presence of that garage, so if it is removed, it would be back before you.
Okay.
Well, there, there is a garage on the site, and I think that's where you're getting confused. They're taking that garage for providing one behind the house of the new single.
That, okay, okay.
Okay? I think that's where you're getting confused. There's already a garage there, but it's not attached to the house. It's a, it sits by itself.
It, it's not a big deal, Mr. Peters. If it's, if it, if they're not providing the garage on the single-family dwelling home, it will come before us again, correct?
It will. The plan as proposed includes it.
Okay. I believe in the, the notes that I read, that they pulled the garage, so it's not a worry now. We'll look at it later and go from there.
Sounds good, Colleen.
Okay, so if you want to move on?
Sure. The next application that's before you is for the waiver of land development approval for the SEPTA station. This is located, the old station is located at 10 Washington Street, the new station at 2 Oak Street. Council will recall, similar to 331, this application was before you at your work session, at which time we went through the plans in detail with SEPTA and their professionals. This evening, you have a proposed resolution before you. It would grant the request for a waiver of land development. It also would grant certain waivers associated with the land development in particularities. So those are from 22-404.3F6 to permit a parking stall size of 8.5 feet wide by 18 feet deep. That's an effort to maximize parking, as we discussed at your last meeting. From Section 22-405.1C to permit sidewalks with a width of less than 50 feet, in an effort to try to maximize parking. And from 22-804 to excuse the requirements of park and rec land, and to excuse the requirement of a fee in lieu, given SEPTA's status as a public agency. If you are inclined, the, the waiver would be conditioned as follows. SEPTA would be granted the requested waivers, subject to the condition that they comply with all of the conditions set forth in the resolution. SEPTA would be required to revise the plan, to comply with the comments in the review letters of your borough engineer, borough zoning officer, borough traffic engineer, and that includes specifically working with the borough traffic engineer to address the turning radius at Stoddard Avenue and Oak Street, again, as was discussed during your meeting, to comply with the comments of the borough fire marshal, and to comply with the comments of the Montgomery County Planning Commission, but again, only to the extent as required by the borough. SEPTA shall at all times comply with the conditions of approval of, of zoning relief. As you'll recall, SEPTA is going before the zoning hearing board for zoning relief. If the zoning hearing board imposes conditions, this waiver is conditioned on those conditions. SEPTA shall apply for and obtain appropriate permits, including building permits and grading permits as required from the borough. SEPTA shall demonstrate compliance with the requirements of any and all outside agencies. SEPTA shall satisfy any and all outstanding invoices with the borough. SEPTA has with the borough already a professional services agreement. That's how we're handling the review fees and other fees associated with SEPTA, and they will continue to operate under that agreement. SEPTA will enter into a memorandum of understanding with SEPTA, the borough, and any other applicable third parties to deal with the improvements. This project is integrated into the projects for 51 Washington and Mattson Mill, to some extent. To the extent there's any coordination required, that memorandum of understanding would address that coordination. SEPTA will coordinate with the borough and obtain any necessary approvals that shall be required for the borough for the installation of all improvements adjacent, adjacent to neighboring developments, again, another effort to try to coordinate the projects. SEPTA shall work in good faith to increase the parking available. A specific concern of council, and harbored several questions during the presentation to council. This requires SEPTA to continue to operate in good faith to try to obtain the land adjacent to the, the new station to increase the parking. SEPTA shall demonstrate that sufficient funds have been allocated to secure the improvements. We've already been assured that those funds are secured. We're simply asking for written confirmation. SEPTA shall execute a land development agreement and a stormwater operations and maintenance agreement, and show otherwise abide by all terms and conditions of this resolution. That is the resolution that is before council, if you are so inclined this evening.
Any questions?
Yeah, I got a question. Today, it's through the mail, they sent out a community notice from SEPTA about the Conshohocken Station, about six inches by 12 inches. It tells you what they're going to do, and all the closings, and all the details of the new station. Did everybody get that?
Yes.
I didn't get it.
No.
I did not.
We got ours yesterday.
But I received it today.
I, I didn't receive one.
Okay. Just give me a heads up.
Appreciate it, Bob.
We'll be getting that for the, we'll be getting that, that delivered to the borough administration building tomorrow afternoon. So I'll have that for everybody tomorrow afternoon, copies of that and some other documents about that.
Okay. Oh, I have mine.
I have one.
Okay. Thank you, Ray. So if council is inclined, I need a motion to approve Resolution 2020-16, approving a waiver of land development for the SEPTA Conshohocken Station project.
I'll make that motion, Bob Stokely.
I'll second it. Jane Flanagan?
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Peters.
You're welcome, President Leonard. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The first item is approve and adopt the May 6 and 20 meeting minutes. So if council's inclined, I need a motion to approve and adopt the May 6 and May 30 meeting minutes.
All right, Griffin, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Tina Sokolowski, I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item is approve the May ending Treasury report and accounts payable. So I would need a motion to approve the May ending Treasuries report and accounts payable in the amount of $524,989.87.
I'll make that motion. Tina Sokolowski?
I'll second, Ike Griffin.
I'll second. Okay.
Thank you, Ike. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to council and mayor matters. Mayor Aronson?
I first want to start by thanking our emergency services personnel and our public works department. We had a very, very busy week last week with protests in town. So thank you to everyone for the, the planning for these events is tremendous, and they all happened peacefully and safely. So, so thank you to Chief Metz and to our whole emergency services team, and to public works. And then the only other thing for me is we're still hosting the Conchocan Arts Festival through the end of the month, and it's conchocanartsfestival.com. So come check out our, our local vendors and musicians, and we'll be running that for the next two weeks. And that's it.
Thank you, Mayor Aronson. Mr. Stokely?
Yes, I have a few things. Number one, I want to, the Father Heron, I explained it earlier, that he sent me an email today, that he would like to have an outside mass on Sunday, the 5th of July at the Afield. So are we having a meeting before the 5th?
No.
No. So we all have to think about this, if we were, to do an outside mass.
We can do that. I'm sure there's some logistics that Ray will have to look into.
Hey, Bob, a question for you.
What's that? What's that, Tina?
Can't hear you, Tina.
Can't hear you.
Okay, since we're losing Tina, Ray, are you there?
Yes.
I would believe, with, with Bob is suggesting there are things that you would need to discuss with Father Heron?
Yeah, I'll discuss them, and then I'll reach out to council.
Okay.
Thank you.
We can do that, and then we should have an answer for Father Heron, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I got a couple emails about the unscheduled shutdown of the Trash and Steam Plant this week.
Yeah, so did I.
We all did, yes.
All right, so is somebody, maybe I'll call Ray tomorrow and see how we're handling that?
Yes.
Okay.
Because Ray has been in touch with them, so Ray would be the person to, to talk to.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I have to know. That's all I have to know.
Thank you, Bob. Ms. Barton?
I just want to say thank you also for last week. It was uplifting and eventful, and I'm glad that it all went well. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Vice President Sokolowski, are you there?
I'm here.
Do you have anything?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Griffin?
I have nothing at this time.
Is Chief Metz with us? Jane Flanagan?
Okay, I'll go next. Hi. What I would just like to say is congratulations to two of our, or three of our volunteer firefighters that received the stipends this quarter for professionally development, whether it was through participating in fire calls or training. And that would be Leo Costello, Joe Costello, and Dave Murphy. Thank you very much for putting the safety of our residents first.
Thank you, Jane. Mr. Tino, did I hear you?
Yes, you did. I joined late. I apologize for that.
I apologize for that, but I do not have anything to add. Bob, thank you for mentioning the Covanta. That is, I've heard a few things on that concern, and Ray, I appreciate you reaching out and providing us with an update. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Public comment?
Colleen, this is Brittany. I did not receive any email submissions.
Okay, and there's no one on for public comment? Okay. With that, I would like to adjourn, right? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night, Ike.
See you when I see ya.
Okay.
I'll see you later on, Colleen.
Okay, Ike, I'll talk to you. Thanks.
Okay, duh.